Seven o'clock, we have four of us here, so. Open August twenty-fifth planning board workshop. You want, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Cyril, you wanna go through this with us?
Sure. Now, we can start with the, uh, the checklist. On the first page, it's a colored, uh, rendering of the site plan. Item number one is the title of the drawing, including the name addressed to the person responsible for preparing such drawing, that's on the title block. Item number two, the north hour scale is on the plan, the scale both written and drafted below the title of each drawing in the lower middle bottom of the page, and the north hour is on the plan. Item three, accurate boundaries and property plotted to scale in your package, I've included a copy of the original survey that was done by Don Brewer. Towards the back of the package. Item number four. Existing water courses. I believe in your package, it would be drawing. S P five may not be in your package. But what we have shown here is a copy of Don Brewer's topography map, and we've plotted on that the areas that are based on different grades, five percent, ten percent, and so on, that's on here, it'll be in your next package, we couldn't get it to print last night. Also, on that plan, we have a survey of the soil types, which is also not in your package, but will be in the next one. And we do have the water courses in there, that will be in the next package, we're actually working on the, continuing to work on the stormwater design, and the SWIP, and so on, so that's all in the package, but you'll get that as a package, which will be strictly stormwater drainage. So that's still within the process, the open item number four is still being worked on. Number five, grading and drainage plan, showing existing and proposed contours that are appropriated to go with the specified, specified by the planning board. A sketch plan conference, and two-foot contouring to goals of soil data generally required on that portion of the site proposed to be developed where general site grades exceed five percent, or they may be susceptible to erosion or flooding and ponding. That's this right here. The soil type map, which might have been sent to you very long in the progress, maybe uh, on the last call, but that will be in the next package, item number five. Item number six, location proposed use and height of buildings. In your package, architectural draws and renderings of the buildings. Drawing A one hundreds of the hotel, so we have exterior views and a, and a three D rendering of the hotel, and sort of a three D cross-section of the hotel. And A two hundred is of the restaurant, which in, in the restaurant, there's an existing two-story house, which will be part of the restaurant, and in front of that house is a one-story garage, that will be taken down and rebuilt as part of the restaurant. The restaurant will be limited to a hundred people or less, that, I think, that would be an A two occupancy, and a hundred people or less does not trigger the requirement for a sprinkler system. The hotel does, because it's on our occupancy. And we'll go over the, uh, we've got so far, the design for the, for the sprinkler system as well. Item four hundred in your, A four hundred in your package, shows an overlay of the proposed roads and developments, sort of, sort of over a aerial photograph of the site, it's kind of an overlay. And then there's at the top of that page, there are two renderings of, uh, of what the site would look like, these are generated, like a three D modeling memory of the, of the site. And A, A five hundred is, is of the pool, which you just received from the pool desires, but there's more to be done on that.
On the first page, just got a lot of the contour lines, I see going through the parking lots and.
Yeah, we're working on the grading also. We did add a build, a maintenance building, if you look on the upper right part of that site plan, above the existing house, we've added a small maintenance building for the golf carts. Also on that site plan, showing, uh, charging stations for electric vehicles, the handicap parking. So item number five, we're, we're still working on that. Item number six, we went over that. Item number seven, location, design, and construction materials of all parking and truck loading areas with access and egress drives there too. What we're, the approach we're taking is that we want to keep both, all these driveways, if we can, gravel or stone materials, so then we allow for circulation into the sub-sol below, we would, we would create a base material, so then support the weight of a truck, delivery trucks, and also the fire trucks. Uh, we're widening, widening the, moving the, the existing driveway to the north, about ninety feet from the corner property line, and we're, we're widening the existing approach road going up, that's at about a thirteen percent slope. We're also widening the draw, the roadway in front of the existing house, the larger house in the middle of the property. In ten years to not, we previously showed driveway on the left side of the drawing, we, we, we know we have development with the parking lots, but the roadways, we're trying to reduce the impact as much as possible on, on what this, what the site looks like right now. We know there's concern about that from the neighbors and.
How wide is the roadway that you're enlarging?
It's twenty feet, twenty feet, I think, twenty-two feet.
Which, which, there are two different sizes shown on here. The roadway coming from, uh, Route forty, and then it goes in front of the house, that looks like it's a different size, is that a different size?
Um, it's, yes, it probably is, but I'll check that, I'll actually work with the building inspector to make sure that the roads are compliant.
Well, is, is there a spec for how big the road has to be?
That's what you were emailing about, right?
Pardon?
That's what you were emailing about.
That's what I was emailing about.
That was the email that you emailed me to. I talked to Eric today, he said in my code book, and I, I emailed him just before we got here, I saw some talk of him in one sixteen twenty-three and one sixteen twenty-four, but I don't, yeah, he needs to get that sorted.
Is, is that gonna be a two-lane road or a one-lane road?
It's two-lane.
It's two-lane, so they could pass, and the golf carts, are, are those?
Those are, those roads are strictly for golf carts.
Are those two golf carts or one golf cart?
One.
Well, what if somebody is at a pool with a golf cart, and then someone's coming down?
Well, they would just have to wait, I mean, this is not, I know before, see a lot of traffic, a lot of, you know, golf cart traffic on the site. The whole intent is, is to encourage people from the city who haven't experienced, you know, the country life, and to get them up here, experience the woods, the mountains, and stuff like that, it's kind of more like a resort type, you know.
Right, but you're on a, you're on a difficult slope here, and you, the, the slope is difficult to work with. The hill.
Yes.
And this is gonna be open in the wintertime, right?
Yes.
Do you ever drive a golf cart downhill on the icy road in the wintertime?
I never have, no.
The, I mean, the, the paths will obviously be maintained and plowed and salted, there's also only gonna be a max of two golf carts on site that are gonna be used by the employees, it's only to, to help someone maybe get their bags, bring them to the hotel, if somebody needs a ride, you know, one place or another, it's not like the guests have access to golf carts, and they're gonna be using them to drive around the site.
So the, then you're expecting the people to, to walk from the hotel to the pool?
Yeah, the golf cart paths are, are, you know, pedestrian paths also. Along with the rest of the site, I mean, there's lawn area, there's, you know, I think the same, the same way at any other, you know, similar hotel resort, the Emerson, you know, I mean, people, you see people walking around.
Right, the Emerson is flat.
Yeah, I think the, the grading plan, Cyril, you should talk to that, that, you know.
Yeah.
The grading, none of the slopes are gonna exceed what's allowable.
I think, I think this goes back to the contour thing I, I mentioned, we can't tell what the slopes are gonna be on this plan.
That's true, and we're gonna, we're still working on that. The, right now, the, the grade of the roadway coming in from, from Plank Road is thirteen percent, the rest of this is gonna be less than that. And this, and where the parking lots are, especially for the handicap people, they'll be compliant, compliance with the ADA requirements for, you know, parking and cross slopes and so on. This all needs to be worked on, we're continuing to work on.
Are you from this area?
Mm-hmm.
So you're familiar with what happens in the wintertime with the ice storms and the snow and everything? So my house was built according to code in Big Indian, and I can't get up and down my driveway without a lockable four-wheel, four-wheel drive.
Yeah, I lived in the same scenario.
Okay, so I have a, I have a truck just to get up and down my driveway, and many times we've had to walk up, so I'm just thinking, ice storm, Sunday night, when the guests are going home, driving down the driveways.
Are, are we limited to ten percent slope?
Yes. Is that in the ordinance?
Yes.
Ten percent?
Yeah.
Okay. Sir, who's those sections again?
Mine, I live by no means.
How, do you know where that, where that's written, the slope? I have to do some investigating.
I mean, I just, the only thing I got, it was parking spaces and I didn't see, no, by no means. I'm sorry, I was wanting to give you something that I could find myself, but.
Did some research on.
I think that would be addressed in subdivision on, on page one sixteen.
Did some research on, in, in engineering, and they're up to fifteen percent is allowable.
I'm concerned, because your driveway, somebody's coming down, and it's steep slope as, as designed, it, you would skip right into the path of the track.
They're, they're gonna be maintaining, maintaining these roadways, plowing, shoveling, and salting, so that, and plus, this gets a lot of, uh, the site gets a lot of low angle wintertime sun, it's kind of tilted in a way where it's gonna benefit from that sun, so there'll be melting going on here, you know, the whole winter.
Well, I live on Plank Road, and my driveway is somewhat steep, it's not long, but it's, it's, it's steep enough so that I, I've actually had my car slide down the driveway when nobody was in it.
Yeah, the, the first section off of Plank Road, you know, per Ulster County DPW, it has to be, uh, no slope, or close to no slope. So it's flat, you're not gonna slide, if you're, you know.
But I was looking at, looking at, it looks like, I was showing this.
Yeah, I think the takeaway here is, Cyril, you have to clarify these contour lines, 'cause it is confusing, it's not, it's not very accurate, and there should be some notes as to what the slopes are.
It doesn't say the grade, but.
The section, the section, coming Plank Road and take that sort of, uh, dog link to the left, that's thirteen percent slope right there.
The short switch, that's.
Between a circle and a dog like you said?
Pardon me?
Like this, this section?
That section is thirteen percent.
Yeah.
And we've, I've done some research, you know, general engineering acceptance is up to fifteen percent, it depends on the type of road.
I have a question about the pool access, so I'm assuming they will have to clear some access for the construction vehicles to build a pool itself. Why, why are they gonna make the, the final road so narrow, when they're gonna have to clear the road anyway?
Well, that would be a construction road to get to, to build a pool, and after the construction of the pool's done, narrow it down just for golf carts.
Right, that, that doesn't make any sense, you're still gonna have to have vehicles come in for maintenance.
You could still get a, you could, I mean, you, your, your, the golf path, I mean, is gonna be able to get a maintenance truck down there, and, you know, that's typical to have construction enabling roadways and paths and things like that in order to build infrastructure and build a project, um, you know, I don't think you'd leave a, a, a construction road, or a, you know, you don't need to get a dump truck, or a concrete truck, or a pump truck down there again after it's built, I think that's a different thing.
You'd have to get an ambulance in there, though, it is a pool.
We would, the base, what, the base of the construction road would stay there, if the, if the golf pad needs to be eight or ten or even twelve feet wide, we'll make it twelve feet wide down to that pool pavilion, I don't think they're gonna drive right up to the pool, and those people will get out, and if someone's in there, and.
Well, again, that's gotta be addressed somewhere with an emergency code or something like that, right? Does, does an ambulance have to get within a certain distance of a pool, so that's something that should be researched and put on there.
And that, that is a, a grade coming up to the main road from the pool also?
Correct. It's not such a, that is not a really steep grade.
Is this a hotel?
That's probably less than, you know, thirteen percent.
So how wide is that, although, is the entry road and the one that says roadway underneath the, uh, existing house, how, how wide are those roads?
Again, I, I, you answered that, I asked that question before, I believe it's, uh, twenty-four feet for the approach road, and probably twenty feet in front of the house, but we can make the house road wider. I'll put dimensions on all this stuff for our next meeting.
Yeah, I think you should put dimensions, and over on the other parking, like Lot E and Lot D, you have slopes called out, three point three percent, what direction, you know, in each different section of the roadway, why don't you put a call out that says what the slope is and, and the direction, so it's very obvious. It's obviously not a flat site, there's not a lot of flat sites, you know, around, so I mean, I think it's working with the grades and doing what's allowable, you know, per code, and, and that's it.
Should we go on?
Yes, yeah.
Protestants are provision, provision for pedestrian access, the pedestrians will be using the golf cart paths and the roadways. Uh, location of outdoor storage and equipment and materials, we did show the maintenance shed for the, uh, uh, golf carts, and at the end of the curved parking lot, we were showing an area for refuse and for, uh.
I'm not bothered.
Airproof enclosure and snow storage. We also have a dumpster up on the left side of the drawing, uh, to the side where the restaurant is. Uh, number ten, location, design, and construction materials of all existing or proposed site approvals, including drains, culverts, railings, retaining walls and fences, that's in the process, that's going along with the, uh, the storm drainage design. Number eleven, description of the method of sewage disposal and location, design, and construction materials of such facilities, I believe in your package, we have the, the design for the septic system, and we have details.
Is that, uh, that's, that's engineered at this point, that site?
It's engineered, and it's in with, it's actually, uh, application is in with Ulster County Health Department, and we're dealing with Tony Puccio as the reviewer there, and um, we're making progress on that. What was that, number twelve? That was under eleven. Item number twelve, describe, description of the methods of securing water supply and location, design, and construction of materials of such facilities. So, we, I did have a, we had a letter from Anthony Puccio, addressed a question to him about whether we can use the spring, uh, for, uh, public water supply. If it's, right now, that, there is a system that's in the wellhouse, you probably seen before, uh, and they have about five thousand gallons per day of spring-fed water. That system uses, I think, ultraviolet disinfection, as it turns out, with, with the Health Department calls categorized as a public water supply as water that's used by anyone who visits the site, not necessarily residents. So that requires disinfection, but it can't be ultraviolet, it has to be chlorine, and it needs to be contact tanks for the chlorine to work on the water and so on. Uh, and there's other things that have been done, tested, part five tests for, you know, bacterias and stuff like that, it's all laid out in their process, and it's all part of their approval process. We are going to be building a partial basement in the hotel for the equipment for the domestic water supply, and also for hot water and, and sprinkler. We are proposing, or showing, two wells, we're probably only gonna drill the one if we get enough water, if we don't, we'll have to drill the second one. Both of those wells will feed into the basement of the hotel where the water processing equipment will be. So we're working on that with Ulster County Health Department. The, the proc, the procedure with Ulster County Health Department would be septic approval and water approval based on what they categorize as public water supply, and both of those will, uh, you know, require their review approval and a permit to install and use, and it includes testing, the water, includes testing, some certified levels, and so on. Uh, in addition to, so what we are gonna do is we're gonna use the well water for sprinkler supply, a reservoir for sprinkler water supply, and also a reservoir, I just speak to, uh, the fire department chief, and they were requesting a cer- certain supply of water that they can draw on with their pumper truck to fight a fire if there is one. The building will be sprinkled, the, the hotel building, and the sprinkler system is, is based on a certain number of heads going off for a certain duration of time, so we have to have that capacity of water, and it's all based on the sprinkler, so we have an engineer working on that.
Right.
So if you go to drawing number, uh, number S P six, we show the location of the two wells, we showing distribution of water lines to the buildings, and we're showing at the very top center of the page, underground water storage tank for sprinkler system. Now, that tank's probably gonna be about, uh, there's two types of systems, there's a system that requires a, a, a pump driven by a diesel motor or an electric motor, and another type of system is a tank that's pressurized, kind of like a pressure tank in your house, there's a bladder, and there's two-thirds of it is water storage, and the other third is air pressure, and that works off a compressor that's similar to what you would see in an auto repair garage. It pressurizes the tank, it stays pressurized, and it's designed in such a way that when the sprinkler heads go off, it has the ability to push that water to the, to the sprinkler heads. Uh, so that tank is gonna be probably, again, the sprinkler system, uh, designing it's probably gonna be a five or less tank, similar to what you would see being installed in a, like a, a gas station, uh, is, the, the wall thickness is designed based on the capacity and the pressure, but the head of that tank will be penetrating the foundation wall, 'cause there's gauges and so on, on the head of that tank, and the way it's done is they actually penetrates the foundation wall so that the operator can see those gauges and so on. So that you've seen at the top center of the page, just to the bottom of the, uh, the proposed hotel, we're getting a little bit paid, we said, we're showing a tank there that says water storage tank for fire upon the use, that will be fed from the spring, water flowing into that reservoir tank, and if there's excess, it will just flow off. But that will be where the fire department will be able to draw water from their pumper truck, or to the pumper truck, and, and fight the fire if there is one. So we're using the spring water for the storage for the, for the, uh, fire department, and we're using the well water for the, uh, for the, uh, domestic use, we're using the spring water for the sprinkler system, and the water storage for the fire department. The reason why we're not using the spring water for domestic use is it, 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 it's required, the same things are required for spring water or well water as far as testing for bacteria and so on, but if we use, if we use the, uh, spring water, it requires an operator, and that would be an employee that, it doesn't pay to have that, so we'll, we'll drill the well.
And we do drill the wells.
We'll drill the well, and we'll get the capacity we need for the, for domestic water use only.
How big are the, the water tanks?
They have to be sized, that, what I'm showing there is probably a thirty thousand gallon tank, but they have to be sized, they'll probably be bigger. Again, that's just a diagrammatic source, an eight foot by thirty foot long tank, eight foot diameter.
Now, does this plan have any staff housing? I can't read the text on some of these.
No, there would be no staff housing.
No, would it be?
No.
No.
If you could spell out what you just told us about the water somewhere on here?
Yeah, as we develop this, but there, there's, there's, there's an engineer working on the design for the sprinkler system, again, that's all NFPA required, design, you know, procedures and so on, it'll all be detailed.
Well, do you know which wells I would drill first?
Well, we'll probably drill the one, the one that's indicated to upper right of the hotel on your drawing, probably drill that one first.
They'd both be drilled, you know, the same two days, so.
Well, okay, you had just said that, depending on how much money you get from the first one.
Which we would know right, you know, that first day, as it's being drilled.
Uh, number thirteen, location of fire emergency zones, including location of the nearest water supply for fire emergency, we went over that. Number fourteen, location, design, and construction materials of all energy distribution facilities, including electric, gas, and solar energy. We're not thinking of solar at this point, that does not say that it won't be considered in the future, um, but we do, we did make contact with NISIG, and we're showing on drawing. Drawing S P seven, uh, the utility pole that's on the, um, east side, on our side of the street, uh, and currently is an overhead system that runs all the way up the site, and curves around to the right to that, a house on the right-hand side, we're gonna be removing that pole, overhead pole line, and at the, at the pole on Plank Road, we're gonna be installing a transformer pan, a transformer, and then from there, we're gonna go underground to, and connect to all the buildings on the site underground. And we're also showing some buried, um, gas propane tanks on the, on the rear part of the, uh, restaurants, we're gonna be using, um, um, heat pumps for the hotel and for the other buildings. The only place where they would be propane is to be at the restaurant for cooking purposes, so that's the electrical distribution and the gas. And that'll be detailed, all these drawings will have the second page of all the details that are associated with, with the first page, we're still working on all that. Okay, number fifteen, location, design, size, and design of construction materials of all proposed signage, we haven't done any signage yet except for the, and for the sign out in the roadway, which we submitted, uh, a few months back, which is in, uh, uh, granite stone with the word Oran in it, I think we sent that in a few months ago, but the rest of the site signage, we're gonna be working on, that would include, you know, signs for handicap parking, directional signs for the hotel, the restaurant, and so on. Uh, number sixteen, location, and proposed development of buffer area, including indicating existing vegetation cover. So your first drawing is gonna show the darker green is where the existing trees are, which you're gonna stay, the lighter green is more of a grass or lawn area, and, um, we'll be developing this, the, uh, when we get to it, the landscaping plan, we haven't done that yet either, what we're gonna do is finalize the site plan, and we'll send it to a, a landscaping architect, a landscape architect. Number sixteen.
We need to know these things before you come back for a final.
Pardon me?
We need to know these things before you come back for a final plan.
We know that, we know that. Uh, number sixteen, we're gonna do that. Number seventeen, location and design of outdoor lighting facilities, including data regarding when appropriate, light levels both within the site and at the site's boundaries. Again, we're not gonna send this to a lighting designer until we're finalized on, on the site plan. So the, so the signage and the lighting will be done, but we're gonna do that, we wanna send it to the designer just one time, and landscaping also. Number eighteen, designation of the amount of building area proposed for retail, office use, and similar commercial activities. We have, we're showing the square footage on each building, what we will do is, we'll, we're working with the owners, designers, so we'll do a schedule of all the different uses and different buildings. of all the different uses and the different buildings and the square footage that are associated with that. So we're still working on that. Number 19, detailed landscaping plan, we talked about that, we're going to do that once we get closer to a final design. Number 20, building elevation, sections and scale sufficient to delineate clearly the massing of the exterior materials, textures, colors of all buildings and other structures shown on the site plan. Again, we're working with the owners, designers, we're, they're putting together a panel of all the materials, colors and samples of all the different buildings and so on. So that's also in the process of being done. Including colors, shingle colors, paint colors, lots of stuff. Number 21, other elements were integral with the proposed development as considered necessary by the planning board, including identification of any state and county permits required for the project's execution. So this coming week, we're meeting with the DEP and the Oyster County Health Department in a combined meeting at the site to work, to talk about the drainage and the septic system. So we know, and we also, do you want me to go over the Oyster County comments also? And the notes from the minutes of the meeting?
Have you addressed them?
Well, I got some notes to myself about it, we can talk about it.
If you've got solutions, sure.
Well.
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, I think it's, you know, we have the comments, you know, we've been having, you know, a few meetings with our team and obviously taking everything seriously. And I think the goal is to provide comprehensive, coherent responses to each thing in addition to, you know, completing the site work package, everything we discussed here in the more detail that's required and addressing all these various things that Cyril was talking through tonight.
So we've started this process, the next thing is to add details to all these different layers of these different sheets that are appropriate for those services and so on. Just, okay? No questions?
Yeah, one of the, one of the biggest things I heard at the public hearing was people are very concerned about traffic.
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys thought that was my biggest takeaway from that night. Like a traffic study in this case might be proven.
Which did the, I mean, most of the traffic was being generated by fire. Like this, we're limiting the hotel to 100, 100 occupants and not the hotel, the restaurant. And yoga is going to be used by the people from the restaurant. The pool's going to be used by the people from the restaurant. So, you know, I don't think our project would be as much of an impact as the public thinks it might be. And I understand where they're coming from, I really do. And I, I understand about the, the traffic on Plank Road. This, these people will be coming and going from the site not in large, you know, it's not like they're going to have an event here and all of a sudden one day you're going to get a couple hundred cars. This is a, you know, a coming and going at intervals that are not going to be all at once. I don't know if, we're working with Oyster County Department of Public Works, I don't know if a traffic study is necessary for this project. There are certain thresholds that require it and I don't know if the firelight project is true or not, so.
I think it's, it's only my opinion, but I think there's might be a bigger impact.
So I, so I'd look a little bit more at the traffic circumstance, but you've done other analyses where neighbors are concerned about traffic. But you're, you're, you're well under the thresholds of peak hour traffic of, you know, 100 vehicles in the peak hour. So we're no, we're nowhere near that number. So that would be a formal traffic study. The intersections that you normally evaluate, you know, could be the curb cut itself, but they can also, the next intersection is a really middle road in 212 and going up the other way, 214. And that section of road has an extremely low volume of traffic and it's under 1,000 vehicles per day. And so the way you evaluate traffic circumstances is by a volume and a capacity measure. And there are no roads in Shandakan which even come close to even 25% of, you know, a volume capacity issue and certainly Plank Road isn't one of them. We have a pavement condition which is less than if we're being built now, except if we're being built in that location, it'll probably be the same width. But it's a full 25 feet of pavement width. And if you looked at accident data and, you know, Shandakan has the lowest accident and fatality rates of any town in Oyster County. And if you look at accidents per million vehicle miles traveled, it's, it's, it's zero. I mean, even 28 is only, you know, less than one accident per million. Anything under five accidents per five, for five, excuse me, anything under five accidents per million miles traveled is considered something that you look at. But there's nowhere in Shandakan where that's really warranted. So we're not sure what we would study if, if, if Oyster County DPW says the site is for the new locations out, but I'm not sure what we'd study in a real traffic study. You know, all they do would be to talk about the city, traffic history and they talk about the capacity of this 25 foot road which is extremely well maintained. You know, the, the lines are, the yellow lines completely painted center and the white shoulder lines are completely painted. I drove it Monday, right after that big storm. It wasn't like a spot of puddling and it wasn't kind of anywhere the creek would overflow, but, but the creek's overflowed. And so, you know, it's a public highway and the property owner has a right to use it for uses that are consistent with the zoning. So I'm not sure what we do in, in a, in a traffic study. Maybe we could just write a narrative which would summarize some of the material we generated. And, you know, it's interesting because when you look at the neck deck, when you look at the neck deck, your consultant, it's a, you know, a very competent consultant that does their own traffic studies, they said there's no traffic issues at all. So it wasn't even like it was even close. And, you know, in secret, I know you're, you're aware of this, but it's, it's worth saying and I'll, I'll stop on this because I guess we're going on a little longer than need be. But, you know, if someone's worrying about something and it's just a speculative concern, that's not a secret issue. A secret issue has to be something where there's a likelihood of it occurring and then not just be a speculative concern, there has to be some, some background data. So that's, that's what I would say. So I, I would say we should not do a traffic study, but we can write, you know, a short narrative that would sort of detail some of the reasons why no further traffic study really warranted. Something, of course, that's concerns of plenty, but, but there's outside agencies reviewing and there's standards and there's data for existing occurrences. So with that, I'd say that's what we should do, but that's, that's okay with you.
I would, I would prefer we did a traffic study. Reason being, there are many things that you're not aware of. I can give you one example. When the DOT puts the scales on Route 28, there are dump trucks, 18-wheelers that go up and down that road probably five to six an hour. Are you aware of that?
No, of course not.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to make you aware of these things. How many vehicles do you think are going to be coming past this piece of property this weekend with the Festival of the Voice?
Well, I thought that's, that's.
500?
A large number, yeah.
500? So there are times when this becomes a serious issue. And if we can get some numbers to base what we're saying that there's insignificant travel for your project, then I feel more comfortable because I have documented proof that we're talking about certain numbers. It's simple. We can't just go on hearsay that somebody says there's only three vehicles that go down there a day, you know? Or there's 100 vehicles that go down a day. We need some, some significant facts to base our decision on.
Yeah, the two specific events of the, of the truck avoidance of the scales and the festivals, those, those, those are valid issues. And I guess I would imagine your consultant, when she said there's no traffic issues, you know, wasn't aware of those particular events also.
But what, what I'm trying to say is if you can produce numbers for us, that alleviates the problem. You're covered, we're covered and we're doing our job properly.
So you want to know number, how many trips generated for our project, basically? How much?
No, but in comparison to when there are those peak flows, when it's normal traffic, it's, it's a no-brainer. But if there's, if there's these alternative uses where there are excess flows, we'd want to see what the site's 80 cars in the peak hour does, you know, in those situations.
But when these construction vehicles come down here, it's also on weekends. It's not just during the week. You know, these guys that are trying to make a living up here, they worked seven days a week all summer long pounding their jobs. So I think what Clifton said was we'd just feel more comfortable if we had figures.
The reason why you want a number is once you get people saying something is too much, that's, what is too much? I decide that no matter what the number is, that's still too much. So you, you actually need a number that somebody can say, who can say, this is okay. And more than that is too much. Not what you think is too much, if you think it's too much. And every, once you reduce it, it's still too much.
And it is a primary access to Woodstock. Everybody goes, nobody goes down on 28th and after 375.
So the festival that's that weekend, what festival does that?
The Festival of the Voice.
So there is a big issue because I live on Plank Road and I walk on Plank Road and I'm often at the side of the road when the bus comes by, there may be a, like the other day, the day that Sam had texted us saying that he drove up and down the road. I was out there on the side of the road taking care of the weeds growing along and poison ivy stuff. And then there was a spectrum truck parked on the side of a blocking one lane. Well, how is two lanes of traffic going to go past it? They have to stop and wait for each other. So it's very concerning if the traffic is either heavy or going fast or waltz. It's a 55 mile an hour speed limit and I think that's excessive given the fact that there's absolutely no shoulder. I mean, they, they basically describe it as the guardrail is on the road. You know, there's no space between the white line and the guardrail. Maybe there's this much space between the white line and the guardrail. Not enough for a person to walk for sure. I've gotten clipped walking along the side of the road. You know, a car, a truck came by and just grazed me with the rearview mirror. Obviously didn't see that I was that close, but there was no place for me to go other than over the guardrail onto the cliff going down the street. You know, that's, there's bicyclists, you know, they can't actually squeeze into the guardrail like people can, people walking their dogs. It's, it's very dangerous and then there are places where the road is eroded. So you can't even go past the white line because the white line isn't even existing in those spots. That's one way down the house. So I, I would be happier if they actually lowered the speed limit to 45. And I think that would allow for people to slow down and stop if there's a pedestrian or a bicycle in the roadway and they have to actually stop traffic until one person comes by and the other person's saying to go past the bicyclist.
But those are good points and certainly lowering the speed limit isn't helping on this.
No, it's not. I'm just saying that this is one of the concerns of the neighbors that.
Right, and valid, and valid. But of course, the idea of the pavement, the natural pavement being narrow and it's causing everyday kind of concerns like when there's a repair truck double parked or FedEx truck double parked or whatever, those are, those are real issues. But, but maybe the idea that they could even be silent, you know, that is, you know, talking about, you know, roads, you know, now that there's the influx of people who are weak enters and who are using roads for, for walking and other kinds of things that are recreational, that there could be some signage, you know, saying, you know, be respectful, share the roadway, you know, while the users are using the roadway. So those kinds of measures could be, could be suggested. But it's, and, and some of those things can be covered in the traffic study, but not in a, not in a traditional traffic study where intersections are evaluated because the volume of traffic isn't that high. But there certainly can be some real information generated, which would be helpful.
And I think any increase in the traffic is going to exacerbate those problems even though that may not show up in the traffic study, classic traffic study. I wish, I wish there was some way to, to make some kind of a big picture, but I don't know how you can do that with statistics.
Right, and, and so of course, you know, the, the people who, the public highways, the people who pay the taxes along the public highways have the right to use the public highways for legitimate uses. And so where there are significant, you know, these impact significance, that's part of the, the measurement that we can do. It's not 500 vehicles a day. So what's significant really is that much more of a community scale takes a different kind of analysis and a different kind of discussion. And I think we can do that. I think that would be a helpful thing to put the people to have. But the idea of signage about sharing the roadway and be respectful of pedestrian and non-motorized vehicle usage, those are the kinds of things that have to be measured. You want to calm the traffic down and that's a tricky thing to do when there's alternative uses on the road. You have dump trucks and you have recreational people and you have residents and that's a, that's what public highways are about. But we can, we will something on that.
May I speak?
Yeah.
One of the other concerns of the public was the water runoff. They were very concerned about that.
Yes, I know that.
And, and I think that the two-foot contour map for your topography is going to be very important. And it just so happens, this is from New York State Association of Towns and it's this month, you're familiar with this. Culvert management planning pays off and I'll ask the chairman if he can just read that because it just kind of brings forth some of the concerns that the public had. You're going to make some water changes, you're going to change some water courses and is the existing culverts and water able to handle it? So if Clifton can read that, I'd appreciate it.
Culverts, the whole thing?
Yeah, there's also another page. It's, you're not getting off that easy.
Culverts are a problem. Let's face it, most of the culverts in your town are old. Quite often, there is no record of when they were installed. Plus, in the past 50 years or more, the surrounding landscape has changed. That means runoff has changed too. An Indian landing on Arundec Lake Creek in the town of Penfield, Monroe County, you can now walk across the creek most days. During the colonial period, folks would salvage the bay and dock at the land in trade, hence its historic name. What has changed? The answer is simple, land use. Changes in the landscape have affected runoff and erosion all across New York State. Today, that means culverts and pipes designed to move runoff away from roads, houses and businesses are often under siege with no water than they were designed to handle. The problem is not limited to culverts. Cat basins and associated stormwater pipes are also undersized, also often undersized in today's deep rain flow rates. Evaluated culverts and other drainage infrastructure, one piece of time is time-consuming and expensive. Planers and engineers need better tools to assess drainage and supporting infrastructure. Good news is there are new tools embedded out there to help, resulting in better informed decisions at the local level about resource allocation towards improved community resiliency. Peak runoff during storms or even during regular rainfall events can cause localized flooding, road overwash. This damages roads and pavement while destabilizing embankments and causing significant erosion. In recent years, local highway departments have been reacting to flood damage with emergency repairs. But instead of being reactive, towns can save money and improve design by being proactive and prioritizing infrastructure repairs. As examples, the town of Woodstock has been working with the county department of environment, of environment, to become proactive in identifying culverts that are potentially undersized and hence pose the greatest risk of failure. The town of Greece in Monroe County has been working with local engineers to assess and improve nuisance flooding along the Leitron, which has impacted roads and residents and overwhelming existing stormwater infrastructure. High resolution elevation mapping by the GIS is now nearly ubiquitous available across New York State.
Which is a suggestion, which is a suggestion. Follow through and you can get an aerial done and answer all the questions to everybody.
We'll do a culvert analysis as part of our drainage.
Excuse me?
We'll do a culvert analysis as part of our drainage, you know, study and so on.
Right.
At least the ones that are feeding.
Well, if you can get a copy of this, it gives you programs too that will make your job a lot easier.
Where do you use that?
This month. This month and Woodstock is concerned about it and it's coming through, you know what I'm saying? So before you get there.
Max, May, June. Yeah, GISnewyork.gov is the GIS program, based on LiDAR.
I think that's good for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. What's the name of that magazine?
Cities of Towns and Topics.
Yeah, it's Towns and Topics. It's by the New York State.
So what would be in our waiting room if we had one? There's something else, Matt, that's. There's something else, Matt, that's Cornell culvert model.
Yeah, that's another good one.
I don't, there's no information other than that, if you Google that, it might show up.
What I'm trying to do, fellas, is not be a nuisance. What I'm trying to do is, let's address the problems that the neighbors had. We go through the site plan checklist. We said, listen, this is how we addressed it. This is the information that pertains to one, two, and three, like you said. And everybody has a clear understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. I think that's, you know, that's what we're hearing, and I think that's a good route forward, is, you know, addressing everything in detail, going above and beyond. If it's getting more traffic information, so we have hard numbers to put to things that can, you know, answer the question, so that there is, there is no concern.
And they'll be answering the question. They'll also be supporting the conclusions that you came through in the night there.
Well, that's, that's what we need. What we need is, I hate to use the word, but what we need is evidence.
Sure.
That it fits into our, what Nixon went doing our jobs for.
Cliff, can I ask a comment?
Yes, please.
I share everybody's concern about the traffic on bike road, because I'm not sure, I think it might be designated as a bike path as well.
Where is that? Someone said that at the public hearing. Where is that designation listed?
I'm not certain of that, but I mean, when I travel, I travel that road frequently.
Well, sure, obviously, no one's going to ride on twenty eight and one more bit.
And biking. But has firelight been asked to do the traffic study?
Maybe we're not, no. Yeah, it's the statute.
Firelight is a great idea, that both, you know, both proposals should engage in traffic study. I think the option city had firelight many times more than, they have parking for a hundred and twenty spaces. I don't remember what firelight was asking for, but I think it was a lot more than that.
I agree what you're saying, Howie. Both, each case has to be judged on its own merit, though. But we also have to try to think ahead, like Howie said.
I think it is relevant, at least in my mind, that firelight wasn't existing campground already. So that if the traffic wasn't excessive, when they were in operation, then we'd have to add on to whatever new density they would have created.
The town had already been living with that, and it was okay.
I mean, they had added ends at times. I don't know how large. But that, I mean, that certainly entered into it for me, that this arm is going to be completely new. I mean, previously just a residential, one-family apartment, I think.
And in addition to, now it's not, you know, it's not instead of firelight, it's on top of firelight.
Did their camp, number of campsites increase based on this new proposal from the old campsites? Impact increase?
Yeah, no, he means from original way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not sure to answer that question.
That's one of the questions we asked them.
Yeah, we did, but we asked them that quite.
We asked them several times, and we're getting concerned.
The firelight is also proposing wedding events.
Yes.
So that's a new use. That's not just pre-existing. I'm not saying I'm against traffic studies, it's just, it's more impact than just forums, forum and open.
Raises the combination, yeah, absolutely.
So I, there's another issue that was raised at the hearing, which was the capacity of the aquifer to support existing, you know, the existing, people using the aquifer were concerned that eight thousand gallons a day, which was your estimate, I think, draining the aquifer, would make a significant risk to, in a drought condition, which we've actually seen recently, where the aquifer has limited capacity, and nobody really knows at what point you're going to reach it. But I'm also told that once an aquifer is drained, it doesn't come back. I mean, that, that's pretty concerning to me. That it could actually drain to the point where it closes up. And that, I think, people who depend on it don't really want to have to face that. So somebody had suggested at the hearing that the, the effect on the aquifer could be measured while the well is being drilled, once the water comes out of the well, whether they, they're monitoring whether anyone else's well is going down. I'm not sure exactly how it works, but that was mentioned at the hearing, that there could be some way to monitor whether that new well would significantly affect.
I think that's asking too much of the applicant.
I, and, I mean, if you drill a well.
To determine how much water is under the mountain.
Yeah, you can do this one of two ways, fellas. If you use your spring, drain it, see what your recovery is. When you drill a well, the well drill is going to give you what your recovery is. So that's, it's going to be there one way or the other.
Yeah, we're going to use the spring for just firewater and sprinkled water. You're right, their recovery rate will be done by the well drill, it'll be a part of his well locks. As far as, what we showed, as far as water usage, that was based on the health department's requirement for occupants and so on, like so many gallons per hotel room, so many gallons per guest, so many gallons for this. So that's what we added up and designed the capacity of the septic system for. We use that same number as an estimate for water, because.
Right. That's what we require a user calculation.
But the fact is that, that the hotel, the whole site is not going to use eight gallons, eight thousand gallons of water all at once, or even maybe in the course of the day. There'll be certain hotel rooms that will be empty, the rest of it will be only open at certain times. The yoga room would be only used at certain times. The pool only gets used, you know, in fair weather, so. So that number we showed was based on the design of the septic system.
Yeah.
But we will know what the capacity to recovery is if the well will be drilled.
The well driller will tell you that?
Yeah. We're, we're understanding, we're sensitive to the, to the environmental issues regarding the project. And we're just, you know, we try to scale back the roads, just to sort of like lessen the impact on the property, so. And we haven't just, we haven't done the landscaping plan yet, and we're going to do, you know, a significant amount of additional landscaping, so we're going to do the best we can with this.
I think you're going to have to pay close attention to the water runoff, you know, where the culverts are, I think. So when the questions come, and say, listen, this is where it's going, this is where it's accumulating, this is where it's going to.
Yeah. And having that data back up and drawing, sizing, and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
And even, you know, making its plan for culvert cleanout, stuff like that.
So let me ask a question, I mean, maybe a silly question. You were talking about grading, because Cliff had asked about parking lot, you know, on the level. Are you planning to grade down to level for parking areas, or is it still going to be as low?
Well, because we're working with a slope, there's acceptable slopes for parking lots, and we'll be working to those, their engineering standards.
There's a minimum slope there, or a maximum, rather, they're allowed to have. That's why, that's what caught my eye, was the one running through the parking lot. That can't be nailed that.
I think the aquifer is, is a red herring. The people on Mountain Laurel Road are at a higher elevation than this, and why aren't their wells subtracting from your water supply? I mean, it's.
Well, nobody knows where, where they're. I mean, they could be, have, have a deep well, and know it's the same aquifer.
The ground is saturated with water. There is no underground river flowing. I live across the street from Art, and I've got a house in the wall within a hundred feet of our wells, and I have a running well coming out, and so does Art, has enough water coming out of his well, and so does the people who live across the street. So there's, there's plenty of water by that.
What John's saying is both sides have to be heard.
Of course.
Of course.
Traffic, traffic, air pollution, you know.
Did you guys have anything else you wanted to say tonight?
Do you have any questions?
I think we asked, I've asked everything I want to ask.
We can talk site visits, right? At what point do we do a site visit? Because the site visit from before was the ultimate.
Yeah, I think we want to, we want more of this work ahead of us done, before we.
So, so do we.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Yep, thank you very much.
So we have those applications, Sarah?
Yeah.
We just wanted to talk about our.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. We have required first submissions.
I was just discussing.
Like hard copy, yeah, but right now we don't require anything.
I mean, I feel like, yeah, it's just not possible. But you can't make it wider, I mean.
We'd like to see that, we have the scales that are on your twenty.
Okay, so this is three, these are the three things in standing board seats. Subdivisions, lot lines, and special use permits.
So I got special permit site time review application. Is there supporting documentation if our concerns are?
Supporting documentation, well, actually, yeah. Application at, at the paragraph ahead, at least two days prior to public court, meaning that's a past day history, but anyways. Supporting documentation, the way it seems is, we get four of these maps from an applicant, and then you get eight applications, one goes to county, and one goes to each form member. And I have to take all of that in hard copy form, and then check for this. And then, and then the application. So it seems so much of it is online, and PDFs, the county refers, it wants it as a PDF. A lot of people, you mentioned at the last meeting, you like to work, we can see it online. So we have this projector, we have that screen behind you. And since the last meeting, the planning board has now purchased a projector. But it should be in your requirement that we require a PDF version of everything they're submitting in a hard copy, don't you think?
Yeah.
And that's where the word needs, it needs to change. So four, four copies, like if this was an ORM submission, could be four of those. Plus the application packet, because it comes with a checklist. Each application comes with a checklist that Art read, kind of thing, but, and then application. But we should say that whole packet needs, and the maps, and everything needs to be in a PDF version, correct?
Yep.
That way at the meetings, you can just watch it overhead.
Yeah. Plus, it'll get taken.
Plus, it's free. Yeah, and then plus the county referral happens, and so much of the time, when you have a consultant like SLR, they, they only work online.
I, I think that was a, that I think that maybe is going to stick around.
I meant, they only work, you know, SLR doesn't have a hard copy of any of these maps. They do all their work. So it's that section right there is adding a PDF version of the application packet, including maps, right?
Yes.
Okay. So that can change without having to go to the town board, right? Or does the town board have to approve that?
We can make a referral to them.
Right, I think that's what you do, right? So you refer, you have the PDF version and maps, yeah. Next application is the lot line adjustment. This one's a fun one. The application packet, same, is eight hard copies of the packet should be submitted. That's fine, but we should ask for PDF, don't you think? That's close to county. I'm turning them into PDFs in the office. Yeah. But it's the final plat that maybe could be looked at. Wouldn't you approve the lot line?
Well, thank you.
Do you want to read it?
We have the final plat.
Yeah.
Within sixty days of approval of a preliminary plat, a final plat, if not already submitted and approved, must be provided to the board for final approval and signatures. It should consist of one linen or Mylar copy, plus or minus seven additional copies of any of the following dimensions.
So you've approved the lot line, you've seen it. Now you need seven copies of these, some, they all just submit large.
And, and a Mylar.
And a Mylar.
And I'm pretty sure if things have, the Mylar will go to the county.
County will, yeah, he signs it, it goes to county. But what am I doing with the other seven copies at this point?
This is after, these are the ones that the chair has to sign.
One stays at the life of the boarding, of the boarding house, yeah. You know, but one of this out of six copies.
Well, it was supposed to be one copy for each board member. This is what it was.
Sure, sure. At the bottom, it says the town will retain four signed copies of the plat, and return the signed Mylar and all other copies to the applicant, who is responsible to file Mylar, plus two signed copies for the other kind of clerk's office.
Okay. So they kind of get that back in. Yeah. And, and one thing, I think, one of the last surveyors said to me, this was expensive, but he did the twenty-four by forty-four, seven.
Oh, Jesus.
And he did, that's the thing, it's like, they don't have to at the end, that's all. So keeping it as is, and then, or do we want to change to seven?
It's actually our standard size, anyway.
The town will retain four signed copies of the plat. Okay, let's just say that. What am I doing with four copies?
One, I mean.
One is filed away forever in the boarding house.
Does one go to the assessors? One should go to the assessors, one should go to the county clerk?
Yeah.
Town clerk.
Town, I'm sorry. Town clerk, I meant, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, I'm going to be on county, but not town. I'll give it to town, because it's in the same holding spot space.
And all, all of these.
We'll just keep it, keep the four.
It sounds like if we've got four that the town keeps, and three that go, I mean, that leaves three, then if that three that go back to the applicant, who has to send two of them and keep one, so that.
So it all takes down, okay.
Well, that actually doesn't, it says seven of town, but it says four to that one.
You can't put these things in that.
Well, that adds up to seven, plus one, that you need.
No, it says seven plus the Mylar.
Oh, one does want to go back to the applicant.
Yeah.
Drive up the road, we're going.
Okay. And then just quickly, the last one, sorry, one more, is you also do lot line subdivisions.
No, it's not, read it. It says.
Preliminary plat, eight copies of the prepared application, four copies of the prepared license, Lancer, licensed professional engineer. So the same thing, everything.
What's the function of this?
Sarah, you mean, what does Sarah do with these four copies? I turn one to county, I keep one, and I keep three, I don't know, I keep three. We don't, we don't need protection, unless I'm messing up, but she would say something. They go into the light, they go into the map drawer, for the light. Our, our STLs are in map drawers as well, so you can come and make, until the house burns down, we keep that in our map drawer. Like, what if I have my one dash two?
Is, is, what do you think, nothing to wear?
Aren't those downstairs, though?
No, they're in our office, and then they're in boxes, and then they.
Every year, we're airing hundreds of pounds.
Above our heads.
Under the roof.
So why don't they make that?
I'm not, I'm not saying don't keep four. That's okay, I'm sure from down the block, the county gets one. We get one, plenty more twice, number's twice, one, I'm raising it. Keep four. Keep four, but it needs to be a PDF version as well for some divisions. They really need to submit as a PDF as well. That's all.
Yeah, if you think like two would be enough for the town, but.
I'm keeping everything as four, because actually, we trained a lot of public, they know four. Like Dumber knows four, obviously, but.
But I mean, initially, there must have been a use for the four. It's just not specified here.
That was about ten seconds, seconds ago. Paul Gloria, right? She'll know why. Okay, so you would ask to see these applications, getting some more PDF version of it, right, Alan? Going to overhead, but it's going to be very similar to Zoom, or when we were doing MS Teams, like, we're going to be dark, that's the only screen we have, which is nice. And then we just project the map, but who's moving around the map? You are. Somebody's got to be.
Not me, that was my question.
Well, how about the representative of the applicant?
Okay, do you have Stan?
I don't know if he's gonna show us a road.
No. That is a person, we got the name.
Joyce Brown was dead actually online, that was inexpensive, that was nice.
Make it higher.
Does it have to be hooked up to a laptop?
Well, that's the other thing, is it can, if they're multiple devices, you could do it with your phone.
So somebody had to operate that?
That's what we're, that's who operates. Okay, well, we'll say, we'll cross that bridge over here with PDF versions. So this is all recommended to the town board that your application process add, that each applicant also submits a PDF version, okay.
That, that one's easy.
Okay, that's it.
It's integrating the tech thing in the.
We'll, we'll have to work through that as a group.
Well, I think that's to make it a lot easier.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to refer things to county and it's a lot easier to deal with these lawyers that like ask me for things or like, they're all used to that world and we don't.
Everything's digital.
Yeah, it's hard.
This, this, this is not a discussion that even needs to be had.
Okay. Um, and then the other quick thing was, do you all, sorry, but do you wanna get a letter together for county for the.
Oh, the, the RAL, RAL explorers.
So RAL explorers, county license expires at the end of the year.
Ironically, two minutes after our last meeting, one of the crossing guards almost stepped out in front of me on twenty-eight, like, quarter after eight midnight. He actually like stepped out and stepped back. Yeah, I was like, oh, that's perfect.
That was after dark.
It was a, it was after the meeting when we were discussing, yeah. Yeah, it was like, it was after eight o'clock, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't quite dark, dark, but it was.
Oh, that's serious.
Yes. Yes, do you wanna send a letter to county mentioning this?
Mention it to them.
Yeah.
Sure.
I, I, I mean, I'm gonna be at the county planning board next week, so I could say something, but that wouldn't be official.
Better send them, send them. So they, we can see that they got it.
Yeah.
Understood it.
So, did you give me some bullet points and I'll make a rough draft and send it to you off email?
Yeah.
And you can sign off on it and sign if people send it officially, but the bullet points are.
I mean, basically it's a late night thing.
Yeah.
Kind of one, one bullet.
Concerns in the community. With the schedule.
Well, that. I understand what the census, if you've got a minute.
Yeah. Did, did we ever find out what their hours of occupation, uh?
No, because there's this like secret nineteen time one that you can't, they don't, you know.
Yeah, their schedule is posted online, but they didn't post Saturday night lighting show or something.
You have to call, you have to like call or something.
Whether, whether.
But we're not allowed, we're not allowed to post the price online, but if you, uh.
So that was, that was all, right?
When you guys were looking at the slope.
They don't.
Is it in our code thirteen or ten? The slope. I only find in the code book, for subdivisions where there's regulation, and these subdivisions, there are roads that will ultimately become town roads.
Did we give them a permit?
And what is this look, what is? Ten percent is town code. That's for town roads. If you're subdividing land, you have to meet those codes. I see what you mean. Yeah, but for, for a private driveway, you know, in Woodstock, it's certain.
Their brochures, that's for PNC.
Criteria, once you go past two lot subdivision, now you have to use much more strict codes. But, but it's, I, I will look some more, but I don't see where we have any restrictions on this type of development that has to be less than a certain percent.
We should, we should learn from this. We should learn from this and.
There may be no legal thing in our code, right? There's gotta be a practical answer, you can't, you know, just because there's not, nothing in our code. You expose a lot of people to a lot of problems if you, if you have a steep driveway.
Yeah, well, that's why we need to see the conflict.
Now, it, the, the county doesn't require that the driveway be aimed with the traffic?
It's perpendicular. Uh, that would be a curb cut, and that would be through the county, because it's a county road.
It, it's perpendicular to the town road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way it's drawn here.
That's where it's supposed to be, that's what I was.
They, they made me move mine.
Well, what they, what.
Mine was perpendicular, and they said, no, no, you'll have to go in the direction of the traffic.
Was yours really steep or something? You could get a flat, maybe if you can't get a flat spot.
Oh, I see what you mean, if you, if you can't put a flat spot on the bottom.
Yeah.
Then you have to go.
Yeah, they don't want you to come straight out, that's why if you slide, you slide, you get rear ended.
Right.
But they're, they're also, where the road comes down, it fans off. There's a distance for the width of your road, that distance of fan, so you can go both ways.
I, there, except our max load is listed somewhere, I can't, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, email them.
It's a, it's a, and I'm pretty sure it's ten percent.
Yeah, it is.
That's for town road.
Yeah.
That's for, that's for, where you're gonna build a development and you're putting in roads, and you want the town to eventually take that road over. That's where the ten percent. So that would affect this. That wouldn't affect this because it's not a town road.
It's not a town road, no.
Where is that section, do you know?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Does anybody, you started using E-code?
Yeah, I, I.
It's genius.
Yeah, because it's, because it's searchable.
Yeah, just search that in.
I was the whole, I was trying to look it up, but I couldn't find it.
That's where I found off of zero. Google.
So, uh, is the E-code equivalent to the big book? That's what I couldn't tell.
I think it's missing some, like, Grace can quote you, like, missing, she knows that weird stuff, but, um, it's pretty much the good book.
It's probably missing the stuff that you mostly don't look at.
Yeah.
Like a lot of stuff about.
Subdivision of land, that's what you think it is, Howie?
Yeah, you know, where I see these regulations, this is in subdivisions, it's like one oh five point eight and one oh five point twenty.
I think we can, we're, we're not obligated, but I think we can ask the highway superintendent too. For his, for his suggestions where roads come into county roads, pri- a private road.
What about the fire department?
He has the ultimate say whether he has, you know, whether he approves or not.
What about the fire department getting up?
Well, that counts on like, is it a, a limit on curve? Curves have to be a certain diameter, so a big fire truck can navigate, um, those roads. But those are specifically for town roads, and I think in more and more communities, placing that in their subdivision code as well. That if you're gonna have three houses on a lot, um, I know in Woodstock, once you go over three houses on a parcel, um, you have to get a fire department.
Yeah. They also, Howie, they also have a measurement for cul-de-sac. For cul-de-sac.
Fire truck, there's got to be, you know, a fire truck. That's actually right, right there. Um, yeah, and I, I mean, and then, yeah, it's a town road, but it's also, this isn't a driveway either, it's private, but there's a lot of traffic on it.
I think there's somewhere we can find it, it comes under public access. But I, I have to look, I don't know what's the top.
You know, the next door neighbor said that they had, the previous people had put the dumpster right by the road, right, um, right next to his house, which caused him a lot of problems, but he said the reason they did that, according to them, was that the garbage truck couldn't get up the steep road. So, and, and there's a history there, and I, I'm, I'm skeptical that the garbage truck is actually gonna get up that steep road, around the turnaround, and steep turn to the parking lot, was, they looked like they narrowed it down to a really small area, and then all the way up to other end of the parking lot to get the garbage, that, that, I'm a little skeptical of that.
And then make a, a turn.
Yeah.
And then make a turn to come out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a real good point. Real good point, that's what.
They have all the capital law too.
But then to put the dumpster back where it was, would be right next to the neighbor's house, and he said there would rats and smell and all that, so.
Isn't this, where, on the plans, isn't this by the neighbor?
What's that?
Isn't this by the neighbor on these plans? Isn't the neighbor?
Uh, well, I don't know at what point it's, it's gonna be an issue for him because it's.
Yeah, it says property line.
Yeah, and this is still his property, I don't know what's back there up that way, but, um.
Yeah, this says property line and it's right at the edge of the property.
Yeah, it is close to his property.
Yeah, it's like twenty feet away.
So this, this doesn't. I found it here. Uh, there's a whole bunch of stuff about curb design. But it says maximum grade, generally no more than ten percent for minor streets, six to eight percent, uh, six, six percent to eight percent for others.
What code, what code, page are you on in code?
Page, um, uh, section one oh five dash eighteen, page one oh five twenty. And it's under the section. Design standards for streets under subdivision, so it's I under, under subdivision, it's section I.
So it doesn't say anything about the town taking over those streets?
No, it just says here, I, I can, design standard for streets, design standards will vary considerably from one community to another because of differences in topography, density of development, and desired character. For example, in rural areas, parking for guests will normally be provided on each individual property. Guess that's like house guests, right? I mean, parking for guests, uh, individual property, and therefore a pavement width of twenty feet should suffice. In more densely populated areas, guest parking is generally in a street, and therefore the pavement should be wider, so this kind of is something, it's like about town roads. The path would be developed for walking or bicycling, the pavement might be narrower than a pedestrian movement or not separated. Therefore, there is no model which can be adapted to all circumstances, the seat counts should be decided upon by the town board, planning board, and the town highway superintendent. Factors to be considered are, and that was one of the factors.
Yeah. That's because you can do a subdivision without it being a town road.
Right.
You have to put together what they call road maintenance agreement. Gets written into the deeds.
I just, I, I. I just don't think that they have the roads designed properly.
Well, I think there's gonna be a lot of changes on this.
I know, but I don't see how a propane truck can drive up here to unload the propane for the, uh, for the hotel and then back out. There's no way to turn around here for a propane truck.
It's gonna be a varied tank, I mean, they have those that will go a hundred feet.
But, so he's gotta stop in the middle of the road?
He's gonna have to, he's gonna have to drive around the parking lots to lot C.
You know, they don't even have a way to get to the other dumpster.
That's also where the garbage truck has to go, I mean, the dumpsters are way up here.
On the other side, yeah, the left side.
Where do you have your dumpster? No, this dump.
Way on the left side of the top.
Oh, that's the, oh, it was moved from the right side?
Yeah, dumpsters, dumpsters are up there, Alan.
Oh, the dumpsters moved, okay.
But there's two dumpsters on this map.
So.
And then the propane tanks are right there.
I, is that the, uh, the hatched areas in the parking lot?
Um, the upper left is the dumpster enclosure, and then in front of, where it says proposed one-story restaurant, and the white space between, on the lower left corner of that is where the propane tanks go.
Yeah, but where would you turn around?
I see what you're saying, no, Howie, the, the hatched area could be an area for the truck to turn around.
That's, yeah, truck deliveries.
Oh, I see.
It says truck deliveries.
But how would he get there?
It has to go, it has to go all around the parking lot.
I can tell you, he's going on that golf cart. They have to drive straight to those. Like you said, there's gonna be a lot of changes on this.
They normally dump, pick up the dumpsters early in the morning. That's the best.
There's a hatched area over here too, where you said, Alan, if somebody came up, they'd have to back in there.
Oh my goodness.
I think they're gonna come straight up here, and this is gonna have to become wider, they pull in there and they back out.
That's right, that's what I, right, that's the only thing makes sense.
Yeah.
All, all the roads have to be wide enough for cars.
Yeah.
Yeah. And emergency vehicles, fire engines, I mean, you have buildings on the back, you have to get a fire engine there if it's required.
Yeah, I, I, I really don't like that idea of just having golf carts, that's, to me, that's asking for.
You know, maybe the one behind, you know, the hotel. And that would be, and they, they said it'll be wide enough to drive trucks on it, at least, but not fire trucks, I guess.
So they have, they have inaccessible dumpster on each end of the project.
What's the other dumpster?
Well, they removed the one of.
There's one on the top right and one on the top left.
Well, they removed that, that, that's the old.
No, they, they, well, I mean, they decided they're not gonna have more than one dumpster.
Howie?
You've got one for the restaurant.
Do you, where, where do you see the other dumpster written in?
Well, there's one over, that we were talking about, but then there's another one all the way at the top, right, that's where one thing happens.
A dumpster enclosure there, so there are two.
Yeah, but that looks like the worst place.
Oh, yeah, there are three dumpsters there.
Yeah.
Then the guy's gotta back out.
You're, Howie, you're right, by the way, the hatched area, it says over here on the right, no parking, turn around. The hatched area on the right.
Oh, here, they're allowing this for.
A turnaround.
But that's for deliveries to the restaurant.
No, I see what you mean, can he turn around there?
No storage.
Truck, I don't know.
Oh, I think that's what these are too.
I hope he has fences here too.
Where do you see snow storage?
Do we need, do we need fences, do we need, uh, fe- fe- guardrails shown on the map?
It depends what the job.
Well, look over here.
That retaining wall?
There's a retaining wall here, very steep, look how thin the lines are.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
Well, that's what I was like, yeah, and those extend right across that whole turnaround there, but they got a lot of gravy to make up in that space, I think. Remember when we walked up there, how steep that was?
Yeah, there's a lot more that has to be put on this, is what it is.
There's a lot of this.
Yeah, we shouldn't have ever had the public here. Whatever.
Just could hear from people though. Just could hear from people.
Yeah.
Alright, uh.
What you're hearing though is fears.
I have some information that I did make the app of regarding the twenty-twenty census. I made a handout. I don't know what handout. Start out looking at the page that says Shandakan history, and this has. The census, pure census numbers. I'll give one to, uh.
If you don't have enough, John, I can, I can look up a video.
No, no, I made enough. Okay, if you look at it, it says, the population of Shandakan in twenty-twenty was twenty-eight sixty-six. They also showed what it was in twenty-ten, when it was about two hundred higher. And then in two thousand, it was around four hundred higher. So, according to the census, Shandakan is losing population.
They do another census in twenty-twenty-two though.
Oh, oh.
But I'm saying, I mean, we had a big population improvement during COVID.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get that out. And then just as a comparison, I have the, the bottom number, as of today, there's twenty-two hundred and twenty-eight registered voters, which is about two hundred more than it was.
That's pretty good.
Three years ago, so. How can our population be going down while the number of registered voters is going up?
Ellen.
People are more voting.
Ellen's.
This is campaigning.
Now, if we turn around to the other side.
Is he campaigning? I know, for instance, a lot of people who were weekend people up here, over the last ten, fifteen years of all trans, but they don't vote in New York City anymore.
Yeah, they all vote up here.
They all vote up here, but, you know.
Now, the other side, which I took from the tax roll. Shandakan has thirty-five hundred and fifteen parcels.
Okay, hold on, where are we?
Next page, turn it back.
Turn it upside down. You got it.
There you go.
Oh, hold on.
Anyway. I've looked at all the codes that have a residence, because the census comes up with a number of twenty-four hundred and eighty-two dwelling units. And I figured it out that that's probably pretty reasonable, if you say, oh, the two family houses have two dwelling units and so on and so on. So twenty, I don't know where they got it, but twenty-four hundred and eighty-two dwelling units where they went to collect data. And it turns out that fourteen hundred and nineteen, they found somebody, and a thousand and sixty-three were not occupied. So, the twenty-eight hundred. So the twenty-eight-hundred people that they found, they found in the housing units that had somebody there. The housing units that didn't have anybody there, there's no people. So. It, it can be very misleading if you think that, well, there's a thousand units in, in Shandaken that have nobody there. So it sounds like we've got an excess of housing units. But the date of the census was Wednesday, April first, twenty-twenty. So if you wanted to pick a good time to not find people.
Shandaken.
It was thinking of going to dinner on a Wednesday.
At the second home, these are the second home people who are not there on a Wednesday.
We should go to the house where there is nobody, yeah. You have second home, and you also have Airbnb, very large a factor in what you're doing here.
Yeah, what's.
Because on my.
My guess is in the, like, three fifty something, right?
On my road alone. I have neighbors who have moved out in the last two or three years, they've all been replaced by Airbnb, even though a property listed for two, uh, two million dollars. It's Airbnb, and it's occupied almost ninety percent of the time.
Well, maybe it was occupied on April first, twenty-twenty.
That's correct, it wasn't occupied Wednesday in April because it's either skiers or, or summer people, so that was counted as empty.
So what I'm saying is that, well, the other, at the tail end of this other sheet is, of the twenty-eight-hundred-and-sixty-six people, twenty-four-hundred-and-thirty-six are voting age, and four-hundred-and-thirty are below voting age. So it turns out that we have twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-eight registered voters out of the twenty-four-and-thirty-six. So in other words, ninety-one percent of all the people they found are registered voters.
That could.
That's pretty good.
So it's not so much whether it's good or bad, but it can be very misleading if you don't realize that forty-three, that was forty-three percent of the housing units, there was nobody there in April of twenty-twenty.
It said there's only four-hundred-and-thirty people in Shandaken under age of eighteen.
That's what this says.
It's fine.
Yeah.
I wonder how that compares with the school enrollment? Do you have any figures on the school enrollment in twenty-twenty?
Good job. Figure from the school enrollment? No, that's seriously, that would be interesting, I guess.
Well, you can see our population is way down, population of the county is up. And I think, uh, the twenty-one towns in the county, we are the greatest decline.
In residents.
Which is part of the decline, it's an increase in.
Right.
In second homes that are.
Right, second homes and Airbnb, there are more people here now than there ever were.
Yeah.
There's more, there's more traffic on Friday night than ever. And Su- Friday night coming up and Sunday night going home.
So when, weekday, I mean, you, you know, you walk up to the rears on, I mean, Main Street, the parking lot's full on Wednesday now, you know, during the week.
I think, you know, Saturday is twenty, it's just unbelievable, man, it's not yet.
Unbelievable, it's ridiculous.
That's right.
Well, you see, I don't know real numbers enough, as you can see, but the main thing is reality. When you walk outside and we're not, you know, running out of people to.
Okay, so it was the fastest growing that's grown in the country last year.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, Grace, last year, in twenty-twenty, when the STR committee was meeting and stuff, their numbers were like a hundred-and-fifty STRs. And Grace has been tracking it, besides the county's report, she's been doing it, and it's at three, over three hundred.
It's been over three hundred for a while now.
In a year, but that was one-fifty, and then, yeah, it is, it's, in a year, it's gone up a hundred and fifty more.
How, how, where do they get that num- where is that number from?
Grace gets it by literally tracking it, by going to every short-term rental site.
Oh, she goes to more than just Airbnb, the others, yeah.
Oh, yeah, she does them all because she, we, we have to figure this data out.
Right.
We're gonna have to figure this out eventually of how we get them processed. So she traces it, and that's the best way, is just to look at everyone.
You know what this tells me, like John just said and what you just said? We have to look at our master plan, you know, and try to figure out where the hell we're going.
I was gonna say, someone just came to pick it up and then.
It was me, I went, I went and got a copy of it, yeah, because, I mean.
It's very different, in your master.
I'm trying to think of what I wanna say. We're gonna lose the beauty and the harmony of our town if we get overrun with, with people wanting to do other things.
Those people, we don't want those people coming.
No, no.
Make the change, they're taking it out.
Oh, what about?
Delete that.
It's such a, much more transient than it was ever how they imagined.
Yeah.
Yes.
The transientness or the, those people, just the coming and going, you know, in and out, in and out, in and out.
You know, and things that.
Changes in nature.
Sure.
Things that we approved are much bigger than I thought. I never, ever, when I was sitting on this spot, and we approved the brewery, to see what I see there on a weekend.
Yeah, three hundred.
Parked around back, three hundred people. Three hundred people, or the Phoenisha diner.
Yeah, yeah, lined up, yeah, Ralex floor is booked from now until twenty-twenty-two.
You can't even get a spot on the Ralex floor.
That's right.
Couldn't even get one.
I watched the people coming out of, uh, the brewery, and my gosh, it is dangerous with them pulling out on Route twenty-eighth.
There's still no, there's still no entrance to any of those.
And they're drinking.
It's fast, I know.
So is that a context in which to evaluate the order? I mean, they're, they may actually become bigger than we expect too.
That seems to be what's happening.
Yeah.
You know, I didn't wanna say anything tonight, but I was really upset with Firelight, 'cause I asked him how much it was gonna be in the beginning, they told me what the, the, the occupa- uh, occupants were gonna be. And it was a hundred-and-fifty, and now it went up to almost six hundred.
It's still a thousand, you guys have pretty great projects, I think that's gonna be a big, nice, big part.
And it's very hard to keep control of these.
Well, the, the big thing was, when, when he's talked about parking, like, what is the hesitancy to put more spots in than you need? I, I know it costs you a little bit of money, but we.
I know you're talking about paring it back.
Yeah, he's talking about, well, I'll get it down to what your requirement is, but, you know, we have to encourage people not to do that. Well, your road requirement, well, how about you put two lanes in so one person can come down and one person?
Well, this little box they have for snow storage there, we've also seen in parking lot, like a winter lake we just had.
Right, you, the whole.
He's got a loose recording of their parking lot.
Right, exactly, it's snow storage.
How are they even gonna, how do golf carts leave?
You can't drive a golf cart.
This is a tough, this is a tough spot to be.
On the snow, I mean, come on.
With all these little.
It wasn't made for snow.
That's, that's ridiculous.
I, I think they should overbuild the roads, right?
Right, exactly.
Because, but, I mean, once you build a stuff, the road gets smaller.
But how can, we can't enforce that, though. We can only go by our code, we'd have to change our code.
They won't spend any money, more than money than.
That's correct.
Right.
But, okay, so it, it costs more money to pay, but they're already having to grade the road with the vehicles in to do the construction, so, I mean, they're already gonna be doing the grading on a bigger road.
Well, this, I mean, one of the, he wanted to cut fifteen spaces off of that, 'cause that's an expensive area to develop, that's very steep there, that's the massive amount of cutting that they're gonna have.
Yeah.
Despite what we think of their presentations, I think they probably know what they're doing. Oh, and it's for us to say they should put the dumpster there, or they, you know, that's, I'm sure they'll work that out.
You know, we, he keeps saying, well, this hasn't been put there, and we're not gonna do our landscaping till the end after we get the semi-approved one thing. All these things have to be done before we say yes to anything, you know? It's, uh.
What happens next, though, in terms of, like, dumping on your agenda, they submit a full plan again.
They gotta finish.
I think they have to finish at this point.
Yeah, we can't keep doing this, so.
Then you just have to refer that back to the conference.
Address every issue and bring us the plans.
And bring it, bring it to its complete.
Right, this has been going on back and forth.
Well, that's the end of my, uh, thank census deal.
How many Republicans and how many Democrats, did you do that?
Yes, of course.
Of course.
Of course it did.
Well, let me read that one, at one point, we have twenty-two-hundred-and-twenty-eight registered voters? How many do you think registered in, to know, in the last five years? A third of them.
Voted, you mean?
No, they're registered.
Oh, registered.
So a third of all our voters out there are just registered in the last five years, thanks to the efforts of, maybe, 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 or who knows what it is. But they're all, they're relatively new people, they're mostly the second homeowner.
That should, that should be the registration up here, I think, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have to pay a greater concern to everything that's happening now, because the people that are coming up here are not only more vocal, but they have more ability to make changes that we can not grab onto. They're finan- they're financially more well-off.
Absolutely.
That's one challenge.
You see it in the ability to run a loan with a voting permit, it's like, I want it now, I need it now, how much is it gonna cost me, I need it now, I needed it yesterday, you know, it's just hoops, like.
Well, we're, we're gonna see more lawyers in front of us.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you an interesting story, I told you already, Sarah, there was a fella that had his house for sale, several people got interested in it and bid on it. The fella that was, wanted to buy it, went around the realtor, and went directly to the homeowner and said, listen, what are your plans? And the homeowner said, we're selling this, we bought a ha- we're buying a house in South Carolina, he said, I'll buy this house here and I'll buy your house in South Carolina for you. So these are, these are stories that are hard to handle.
Did it work?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it work for you?
Yeah, no, he did it.
Like, so it turns out over here.
Well, to wrap this up, this was an early, uh, publication of the twenty-twenty census, apparently there's gonna be more data coming out in the end of September, I think they said. And, well, and the one thing that they also covered just last week or whatever is the, uh, the racial makeup of Shandaken, which is, you know, ninety-five percent non-Hispanic, like, you know, or something like that, and then there's a few odds and ends.
John, I have a question to ask you, you said this is one day they do this?
Well, technically, it's April first, twenty-twenty, that's.
They don't do it on a Monday, though.
No, they can't do it on a Monday, but it's, if you don't find anybody there.
The questionnaire that you sent in or do online, it says, who was in your house as, on April first, so that's part of the statistics, not just the house visits, but the people who send in the information, they also put, it was on April first that this was true.
What's the margin of error for this, do you, do you have any idea? I mean, I.
That's why.
I can't see.
That's why I always said that.
I can't see this being really accurate.
No, it's only, it's dependent on who sends in the information and, and who gets, who at home, and it's really, that's, that's a little bit, that's probably really, the county was, uh, the county planning board was really trying to draw up support among the people, among the, the residents, to actually get involved and do this.
Yeah.
And it was, it's kind of.
You get allocated more money. But it's the same everywhere, so the level of, of accuracy is equally not, it's equally bad everywhere.
It's equally, you know, I wonder, I mean, there's gotta be difference in rural and urban areas, but I don't know which is higher than right.
It's equally bad.
Oh, yeah, well, it's people.
Well, getting back to what I was saying before, I think we should allocate some time for all of us to go over the side of the master plan, and take a look at it and familiarize ourselves with it and see where we're, where we're heading and what we want, you know?
It's got a lot of good information about the nineteen-ninety census.
Yeah. I have a.
The old master plan.
I have a copy of it that I got, and what I'll do is I'll bring it to the next workshop.
So about, let's say, September twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Considering the, the parking at, at the two restaurants you mentioned, the, the, uh, the brewery and the diner, can we change our code? Make it, make, have, require more parking for restaurants?
But they're already been approved.
No, not.
He's saying in the future.
For, for the next restaurant, that was.
But one thing you could examine is, but they got a, um, special use permit for a brewery, is the occupancy load. And they would have to have enough parking in these.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we have in the code for every seat in a restaurant, you need one-third parking space or something like that?
Right.
Three to one, can we make it four to one? Do we have the ability to, to, to change our code?
You could, you could, but what I'm saying is, he's already has an occupancy.
Oh, I know that.
That was determined.
That's, that's, that's.
These are not for future projects.
For future restaurants.
Yeah, but we have a project that's already been approved, and he had a certain occupancy load and had to have so many parking lots, spots.
Yes.
Well, now if he succeeds the occupancy load, he put a terrace outside, picked up tables, the pizza shop came back, we have the, uh, Meg's Place, or, I don't remember, what, Mabe's Place, right? So, yeah, that parking lot is full, and, um, but they were occupancy loads for all of those.
Yeah.
Well, then you, because you now has that whole second space as well, right?
Pizza house.
The brewery.
So. I mean, I don't wanna make a work for myself, sure, but if you have a certain amount of parking spots that you got approval for, and you had a hundred seats, and now you have a hundred and fifty seats.
But all of them did have, and you have to look at it.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so how do, how do we handle it?
The diner just moved out, finds you.
Well, you can't, you can't.
No, you can't.
How about, how about we do it now and, and, and make them have four, uh, 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 one spot, and one parking spot for two, and at least they start out bigger.
If somebody gives us information, and they give us the square footage of the restaurant, and we figure out how many parking places there are, and they put in an extra hundred parking places, they're in violation.
It's not the parking, it's the extra hundred, it's the extra two-hundred square feet of restaurant they add on.
Well, that's, that's in violation also, but.
It's not in violation to have more parking spaces?
No, not to have more, but it's, it's in violation to occupy more than you said you were gonna have.
Yeah.
If you came to.
You meant restaurant, not parking spaces.
Yeah, if you came to the planning board and you said to us, okay, I'm gonna have fifty seats, and we said, okay, you're gonna need a hundred-and-twelve parking places, and they said, okay, fine, now they have a hundred seats.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a problem, yep.
Yeah.
Well, like, the diner just down the road from that has a diner, but now they have ten outdoor priceline tables.
Right, and they don't have their parking lot.
Yeah, and, 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 yeah, and made us spaces.
Yeah.
But that was, that was necessary.
But, but, well, we do have the ability to enforce that. We can say you're in, you're in violation.
That was, that was so great, we're standing.
You don't wanna go after the best businesses in town.
I mean, I, see, once they had to go outside to have people, you know, eat there, then how do you lock that back? I mean, people are still gonna wanna do that.
But, 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 but in the back of the city too, there's all those, like, sheds people built down there, they, they gave up parking, so.
Well, this, you know, Vivian, what you're saying is absolutely right, but this even goes further. They don't have a septic field that was designed for that amount of people. All the dishes, they're doing all the kitchen stuff, they're washing, the restrooms, so they're all, they're also in violation of what the requirement was for the septic.
Just more work for him.
And the assumption was that, Vivian, the assumption was that, once the COVID thing was over, that everyone was gonna move back in to their spaces.
But that's not gonna happen, no. How, how do they divide up, for that little strip mall, how do they divide up the parking?
There are signs in front of buildings.
But, I mean, if, if it's not, of course, I mean.
They don't.
It's first and foremost.
If not, of course, there's a sign, there's a sign that says, don't park here unless you're going here, and then after the business is closed, people park everywhere. I mean, in that, that part, you should at least work out with the timing, like, the, the preschool is not open at the same hours as the brewery, or at least not busy.
Well, that's another thing, in our ordinance, it says you shouldn't put a bar next to an elementary school, you know, that just makes sense.
But they meant, but that's a brewery and a preschool.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm ready, go on.
Yeah, let's go on.
Okay. So, are we talking about every day less ever?
Do you know how hard that was to get all four together?
That we know is close.
Yeah, and you're under a chance, okay, I know, I mean.
We need, we need two hours for the class on top of whatever else is going on, my preference is for that, that, whatever else to be nothing.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and you went over the master plan the end of September.
The magic is not bad, come on.
And then you wouldn't put on that, plus you're going, I know that, I know there's subdivision coming, I know there's Cavell's coming back. The perk test, they got the brewery number. I talked to John Brewer, they were like, when do you have brewery, just what's coming your way, you know, and there will be things, I'm sure, by end of September.
Is it more than a three-lot subdivision? Is it more than a three-lot subdivision?
I only, it's a rumor of subdivision, I don't even know what this is.
What do you want, ma?
A rumored subdivision, subdivided along.
You know, everywhere I go in the town of Shandaken, there's health wanted swings. Everywhere I go. And I just found something out. The major employer in Shandaken has 185 employees.
Who?
I, I can't really say, but it's the major employer.
Which you made them?
185, I almost died, they said.
The Bel Air.
I, I said, they said to me, how many employees do you think we have? And I said, 85, 90, they said, you're 100 short.
And you were there?
It's Bel Air now. Okay, good night, everybody. I'm ready to go.
Still not accomplishing.
So, thank you.
Thank you, John, for that.
Hey, Ellen, I watched the last program on TV that you did. You taught me something very important. With my white beard, my white hair and my pale complexion, I should not wear a white cherry. I look like Casper the ghost.
Ellen, Ellen just got a new computer and is struggling with that thing everyone struggles with, hating the new OS.
Oh, yeah.
We should skip Windows 8.
Alright.
Alright, good to everybody.
Find out where this restaurant's places.
I don't know what you're. Residents working up or down the.
All white things. Yeah.